Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Villa Park City Council. I hereby call the meeting to order. Jared, will you please follow the roll?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Barnett.
Present.
Councilman Colacott.
Here.
Councilwoman Fassinelli.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson.
Here.
Mayor Mills.
Here. Right now, I'd like to ask our Lieutenant Puckett to lead us in the pledge. How will all stand?
Please. Colonel Hart, where do you begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
This time, I'd like to ask all those in the audience to please silence your cellphones or turn them off if you wish. The city council and the staff welcome you to this meeting and we encourage your participation. If you wish to address the city council, please complete a present card, which is in the back, and hand it to the city clerk, which is Jared, he's sitting right here. And the scheduled meeting time. The speaker cards can be found again at the back here, and speakers are limited to five minutes generally. This time, we can go right to the presentations. Could I start with the Orange County Sheriff, please?
And I will just say, as Sheriff's Department's coming to the podium, we did have a closed session beforehand-
Yes.
...and discuss the city manager position, and there's no reportable action. That is all.
Thank you.
Members of the council, good evening. I'm sorry if my voice is a little hoarse today. I was volunteering in our basic academy, which is a full-stress academy. So, a lot of yelling and not much of a voice left. So, going over our Part One crimes for Villa Park for the month of October, which of course has not yet completed, but as it stands, from October 1 to now, you- the city has experienced three Part One crimes. The first being a petty theft, in which a gardener left a tool unattended, and then the tool went missing. The second was another petty theft, in which some political signs were removed from both public streets and private property. And then the last is what we would classify as an attempt burglary at the Sierra Villa Middle School, where it looked like a screen had been partially pried open, but nothing was taken, and no evidence was able to be collected at this point. That's it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Orange County Fire Authority, ready?
Good evening, Mayor, council. Thank you for this opportunity. For the last month, the CFA, the Orange County Fire Authority, has responded to 29 incidences within the city of Villa Park. Has stayed very consistent. A little over 40 percent of those were emergency medical type of incidences, and we had no significant fire activity. Any questions?
Council, any questions? Thank you. Thank you, Captain. Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control.
Well, Mr. Mayor, this month, we had a very light agenda, but I had a rather unique experience with them this month that I'd like to tell you about. Two weeks ago, I went to San Diego for the California Special District Association Annual Conference of over 800 attendees there. And being president, I got a big, this big suite of rooms and had a reception, you know, a president's reception one evening. And I invited the three attendees from Vector Control District there. And when they got there, they presented me with the golden mosquito that you see here with- this is Jared Devers, the Communication Director, myself, Rick Howard, their general manager, and Neil McCormick, the CEO of CSDA. But they presented me with this golden mosquito from the Vector Control District. And in addition to that, when we had our meeting last week, they did the presentation again at the meeting, and they also included in their newsletter.
So, this is the most unique, distinctive recognition I've ever gotten.
And to have my own gold mosquito.
It's a very large mosquito, Bill. I mean, is that from Minnesota or Texas?
From Texas. But that's my report for the mosquito in Vector Control District.
You only get one bite with that.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I went to the- actually, Deanna, could you report on the sanitation district?
Yeah, I went to the Administration Committee meeting for sanitation, and really, nothing to report. They gave us a presentation on their biosolid system, which was quite interesting, and they have tours available. If anybody would like to take a tour over the holiday season and educate themselves, I think it might be worth it. That's it.
I have no report on the- as it turned out with the schedule, with the complete board of the sanitation district. That meeting is held tomorrow night, so I'll report on that next month. Anything for the library advisory board?
Yes, we had a meeting on the 13th down at the Tustin Library. And the only item, gen item of note was discussion of the library that's being proposed for the great park. And the direction of the board was to staff to go back and provide some more long-term planning for library facilities.
Excellent. Thank you, Bob.
Did they approve- did Irvine approve a park? I mean, a library there? I know that the Mayor Choi had wanted a big park. Did that get approved?
My understanding is that it has been approved by the city, but there's some discussion about how much involvement the county as a whole will participate in that.
Got it.
And there's some question- there are some questions about that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, council? Budget and Finance Committee?
No report.
No report.
We didn't have any meeting.
Community Development and Public Safety, Bob?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Human Resources?
No, no report.
Basically, we had a meeting earlier tonight, but okay. And City Advisory, Schools Advisory, sorry?
We did it. The City Schools Advisory with OUSD was canceled due to not having any agenda items. We did have a school committee meeting here, which was very good. We did have the four PSOs from the high school. We had OUSD in attendance. Kathy Moffett was in attendance, and we had some liaisons from some of our philanthropy groups. Some of the items that did come up that might be of interest to everyone is that there has been some change, as far as volunteerism, at the two elementary schools wherein that if you volunteer more than five hours a week, you must now go through a fingerprint and background check, which is not something that OUSD has done in the past. And they are doing that in conjunction with having to have molestation coverage. If you do any events on the school grounds, you need to have a separate policy on your insurance coverage. So, that is something new for this. We are a community that does volunteer quite a bit, so if people are volunteering a lot, they're going to have to have their fingerprints taken and do a little bit of a background check. Costs about $80, so there's- they're trying to work some bumps out with that, but that was something that did come out of that. In addition to that, there are some items coming up. We have homecoming for our local high school, and there's a homecoming football game, which is quite large. If the council members are interested in going, I think that you'll enjoy it, and certainly, the community would enjoy them, you know, would enjoy the football game.
That'll be November 4th, correct?
November 4th.
And then the homecoming's on the 5th?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, so lots of good things going on there.
Law Enforcement Advisory Committee. Vince, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity. At the last meeting of the Law Enforcement Advisory Committee, we had no specific recommendations to provide towards city council, but we are taking a look at several different items still. We're looking at ramping up our PSR and reserve program. That seems to be a significant goal for our new lieutenant charge of police services. And we're also planning a coffee with the cop on November 16th. Details of that event are still pending. We'll advise more when we have more. The Community Emergency Response Program. We have 15 current members that are still interested in participating. We're looking to expand that. We're also looking to recertify those in a four-hour class. We're working with Orange County Fire Authority, as well as the Sheriff's Department, to get that up and running. And then Neighborhood Watch. Yet again, we've had another increase in our membership. So, Villa Park is getting involved, and they're working with us, and we're making a difference. It's just a phenomenal accomplishment, and I give all the credit to Neighborhood Watch and our residents. We're all stepping up to the plate. Roadway Engineering. It's less of a roadway engineering issue. I think it's more of a enforcement issue, but we've had numerous reports, unfortunately, of motorists running stop signs and speeding on Center and Lemon and Santiago. I know that the Sheriff's Department's looking into that. Our committee's looking into that, and we're seeing if perhaps there are other issues that are related to it. But that's, again, still a pending item. That's all I have. Thank you so much.
I have a question. On the roadway engineering, who's making those complaints to you? They coming to city council and city council to staff, and they're forwarding them on to you?
Actually, councilmember, I should say, Mayor Mills, had some. I've had numerous-
Yes.
-in my canvassing around Villa Park, going door-to-door, talking to residents-
So, they're not calling you?
...in various organizations.
You're just talking-
Pardon me?
They're not calling you directly?
Oh, yes. No, I've had actually several phone calls, in fact.
And are you forwarding those to the city manager so that we have some sort of an idea?
Considering we have a meeting every month, we discuss those at the meeting.
Okay, because I'm looking at the agenda, and the agenda last month was very generic. All it kept saying- all it said was update, 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 so- and there is a-
I'm sorry, is there a question?
Yeah, there is. It just says update, but there's no back- there's no backup, so I had no idea what the update was.
Okay.
So, that's why I'm asking. Also, at that last LEAT committee, it's my understanding that there was discussion regarding having a motorcycle traffic cop that- to be hired by the city of Villa Park at a tune of about $300,000 a year.
No, that information is erroneous. That's-
There was no discussion about a traffic cop at the last meeting?
No. I don't know where your source is.
Are the minutes updated?
I have them right here.
Okay.
And these are draft minutes, but there's no discussion about it.
Do we have the minutes from the LEAT committee?
Pardon me?
The minutes from the LEAT committee.
Those are the minutes from the LEAT committee?
They're draft minutes. I was unable to attend the meeting, so the Acting Secretary, Mr. Wayne Suzell, prepared the minutes.
Okay, couldn't you forward them to council?
Sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions, council?
I have one. That motorcycle issue?
Uh-huh.
Is that still alive or is that kind of dead? I've asked people, and everybody tells me it's dead, but I kind of perceived you at the heart of it, so I just thought it was a good chance to ask. Is that still-
No, there haven't been any recent discussions about that in several months. I don't know where Councilmember Fassinelli is getting her information from, but that's erroneous.
I kind of hear stuff too, and it's so it- and it, to me, it didn't make a lot of sense, but-
No.
Is that kind of a dead issue? I mean, is this something still-
Councilman Mills and I were both at that meeting, and there was no discussion whatsoever.
There was no discussion at all?
It's pretty much-
This past meeting?
Yeah, I've also heard that it's gone, and I just thought I would ask.
That doesn't mean it's- there aren't rumors around, but I mean, we haven't talked about it for months.
No.
I don't know.
Yeah.
That's why we wanted to ask.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Investment Advisory Committee?
Well, Investment Advisory Committee did have a meeting this time. We had a quarterly meeting. We had been looking into a 115 trust to help to pay down our unfunded liabilities and other post-employment benefits. And Chairman Underwood had gathered a lot of information on it, presented it to the committee, and they all agreed that he should go forward with looking at that to bring something to the council in the future on that.
Okay. And that would come through the committee and then you'd present it?
Yes.
Great.
Bring some recommendation to the council in some future date.
Okay. And that's it? Community Services Foundation? I guess there's no report, and a friend-
Bob, yep, it's Bob and-
Rick is the-
Rick is the one.
You know, I'm on there, but you know, I was supposed to get a report of stuff that they wanted to present, and I never received anything, and I wasn't there, so I can't update you on that one. When you get to it, I have a brief comment I'd like to make for FIRE, but other than that, I don't have any comment on that one.
One thing to report with the Villa Park Community Service Foundation is that this Sunday is the annual Halloween Fest here in our town center. 4:30 to 7:30, and should be another good event.
So, bring all the kids. And friends of the Villa Park Library.
There was a meeting, but there's nothing to report.
Okay. Rick, would you like to comment on the CFA meetings?
Yeah, just a brief. You know, I just want to share this because it's such a significant issue. It kind of bothers me, and I want to make it- I want to make council aware of it, and I won't be here a whole lot longer. You know, at the last meeting, I agendized a couple items. The primary one being a request that FIRE make available the information, generic information regarding employee data, comp data, actuarial statistics, et cetera. The information that OSERS maintains to develop the- their budgeting for pension payments and the deficit calculations, et cetera. And Stanford University's Graduate School of Business and Economics, there are about five professors there, and I think I mentioned this before, that have gratuitously offered to provide an independent evaluation of what these various California public agencies' real deficit looks like. They apply their own assumptions, economic assumptions, earnings rate assumptions, and they develop an independent evaluation as to what they think the deficits look like. One of these professors got a Nobel in economics, so it's a very prestigious group. I would shudder to think what it would cost to try and have a blue-ribbon panel like that to retain them, to get those kind of numbers. And they've offered to do it gratuitously, I suspect because they're concerned, but in any event, I actually went to FIRE as an agenda item and asked that the board vote to instruct staff to make that information available to the Stanford group so that we could have that information just for informational purposes. I've kind of given up trying to make changes down there, but at least to be transparent and get that information as a baseline. And frankly, I'm very disappointed to say, it got shelved to a committee, and frankly, from the comments that were made, it was clear to me that at least certain members didn't want the information. So, I just think the public ought to be aware that we have an agency that has an admitted half-a-billion-dollar deficit, Orange County Fire, for pension liability. The- there are termination numbers you can request from pension agencies, and when you do that and ask to be relieved of liability and have them take the liability, then they get a little more conservative, and those deficit numbers tend to get a little higher, and it costs you a little more money to get out of there. We can't do that with OSERS. I also requested that we get a termination number to find out what the pension agency really thinks our liability is if we leave. And CALPERS, California Public Employees Retirement System, will do that. My perception from the stuff I've read looks like you end up with maybe four times the deficit. So, if in Villa Park, for example, they told us a year or so ago that our deficit for our pension was like $854,000, but if you want to leave, you don't want to take that risk anymore, and you want us to assume that liability, you got to pay us $4.5 million. So, the numbers I've seen generally run to the four-times range. And I asked FIRE to please request that termination liability, but as it turns out, OSERS previously had a request from Orange County Vector Control because they wanted to get out, and they wouldn't give it to them. What they did is they stood by their standard number, which Villa Park's case with CALPERS, it's similar, very similar numbers in organizational structure. You know, they- we went from $854,000 to $4.5 million. OSERS decided, apparently, they don't want to do that, so they stuck with their number, in this case, Villa Park, $854,000. I don't know what it was with Vector Control, millions. And they said every- not more than every three years, we're going to true-up. So, you're never going to get off the hook. You can leave, pay us this number, and you can leave, but we're just going to keep adjusting it, so you're really never going to get off. So, I gave up on that, at least asked that FIRE let Stanford University give us their evaluation as to what this county's deficit is, or what the 23 cities and the county's deficit is for those liabilities, for those benefits. And frankly, I couldn't get the board to do it. And very, very disappointing, and as much as I, you know, the nice, great board members, nice people, Orange County Fire Authority has great people, nice people, but financial reality is out the window, and they wouldn't even request the number from Stanford. So, I think that's something the public ought to be aware of. I suspect, you know, based on what I've seen-
I think you should write an editorial to the Register.
Yeah, it's just, you know, it's crazy. Anyway, so enough time on that, but very disappointing that the board would not even request the gratuitous numbers from Stanford University to have them tell us what they think our deficit is. You know, one comment was made, I think we should get that from OSERS. And my response was, OSERS put us in this hole. How could it hurt us to have Stanford look at it? And it went nowhere. Very disappointing, so.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? With that, I'd like to move to public comments. At this time, anyone may address the council on any off-agenda items. In other words, if it's on the agenda tonight, we can't talk about it at this particular time. But we would like to have anyone who would like to come up and speak right now, please limit your time to five minutes. Tonight, seeing none, we can move on. All right now, we'll consider the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered routine, usually enacted by one motion approving a recommendation from the agenda. Any member of the city council, staff, or the public may request that an item be removed from the consent calendar for discussion and/or separate action. Are there any items that would like to be removed tonight on the consent calendar from my colleagues here? Seeing none, can I have a motion?
I'll move the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
Second. Jared, could you call the roll?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem Nelson.
Yes.
Mayor Mills.
Yes.
Councilman Barnett.
Yes.
Councilman Colacott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fassinelli.
Yes.
Motion carries, 5:00.
I've never seen that happen in the entire time I've been on council. No one has pulled an item. You students just witnessed the first. Never, ever have I seen no one pull an issue and raise it.
Well, there's more things on the agenda, though. There'll be something, so. Item number eight. Now, we'll discuss the elimination of the business license program, and that was an item that I brought to it. It's been brought to my attention that there's a lot of, a lot of what I call busy work by the city staff, and we have a lot of things for them to do. We have a very limited staff here, and it's also a minimal income generator for the city. What I'd like to do is that the way that the- our law reads is that anybody that has a business in their home should have a business license, no matter what it is. Well, a lot of people are insurance agents, or they are salesmen like I am, and they don't really do anything in the house except answer the phone or call people. And also, we have a lot of gardeners and other service people that come in and out. The way that our ordinance reads, they should also have a $100 license. So, I'd like to bring this to the council's attention, and I'd like to consider eliminating this altogether, except for those businesses like in the town center here and things that are actually operating and exchanging different types of materials out of their house or their garage or whatever. We do have businesses like that around town, and so I would like to have anybody from the public comment on this. I think, one, we have Kathleen Moran, I'd like to speak on this.
Are we going to have discussion up here before that?
We'll do it afterwards.
Good evening.
Evening.
My name is Kathleen Moran, and I would obviously like to see what the discussion's going to be before I make comments. I find it very- I'd like to see the nexus on eliminating business licenses, which is being brought up today, along with the problems we've had in the last two months. Well, it's been a couple of years, but especially in the last two months regarding the sober living and/or-
I need to make something very clear. The ADA has nothing to do with the business license program, and there's nothing that the city can do, and our council can back this up, about ADA. It does not require a business license at all.
Sir?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Let me have my three minutes.
Okay.
You can do whatever you want with that. I understand the difference between a sober living house, and I understand the difference between a detox house, which we have in our city now. I would just like that the district, I mean, the district, the city, look into- look into what- I'd like to have a detailed study on what you're proposing and what its effects are going to be. Because I know there's ADA. There's also seems to be some misunderstandings within the city staff and maybe councilmen on what the difference between sober living and detox houses are. We have a detox house across the street from me now, and it's being run like a business. There are 10 to 12 cars there, not all the time, but a lot of time, with people coming in and services and everything. And at least, I spoke with Costa Mesa's city manager regarding the problems they've had down there, and I've talked to the county health department, of which Health Care Agency, in which was an area that I used to brief Supervisor Morlock on. So, I'm very familiar with the different types of housings, and they do have different nuances. Some of them are under, according to the information I got, are under business licenses. Some of them are under your residential zoning deal. I think- I don't know whether staff has done this or not, but I would surely expect the staff, since we've had this problem for a couple of years, to be at least checking with League of Cities, which does a lot of information for the cities that have common problems. Now, I haven't checked with them yet. I will touch with my contacts with them, but I don't want to see you eliminate business licenses from an area that may have some overall effect on what's going on in our city now. So, before you eliminate it, I just would like to see a full study on it before you just eliminate, because I think this is kind of a nexus that's coming up all of a sudden. Maybe there's no nexus. Maybe there is.
You're absolutely right, because there has to be differentiation in the different kinds of businesses, and even if, you know, they're operating at profit or whatever, I mean, you're absolutely right. What I was referring to is I would like to have a comment from council. If our attorney can tell us about the differences in those, that's one-
Well, we don't have to do that tonight.
We're going to talk about it tonight, anyway.
About where? On what part of the agenda?
We can talk- well, because it's a-
Where is it on the agenda that you were going to talk about that tonight?
Well, in the business license, we can talk about that, the different kinds.
Pardon me?
We can talk about it with the different kinds of business license. I mean, that's what we're here, just to talk about it. That's why it's on here.
Oh, so you are. Okay, because I tried to get background stuff on this, and this just didn't give me, you know, enough information on what you were going to discuss or what type of business licenses. I went on, I read your agendas, I read your backups, and there was nothing on it, and that's why I came, because I wanted to see whether- what kind of business licenses we're talking about. we're talking about, and, because what's going on in our neighborhood now is, it's a for-profit business.
Mm-hmm.
And it's disrupted our residential area a lot.
You're right.
And if it falls, and if it falls under the business part, think twice before you just eliminate...
Oh, sure.
Things that, that allow you to still have some control of this.
Absolutely. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'll break it back to council. Seeing no one else?
I have some comments on this. This issue was brought to council in February 2014.
Mm-hmm.
So, actually, yeah, February, March. And it was the exact same issue, and it was to eliminate the business license fee. At that time, we didn't have Councilman Colacott, and Councilmen Nelson weren't on there, but at that time, it was agreed that we would not touch the business license program. Council did advise the staff to go back and to look at a different way of proposing a business license, based on whether you were a gardener, whether you were a manufacturing company, whether you were a salesperson. Then it came back to council in March, and it was agreed upon that we would not change anything with the business license. I want to make sure that staff has done a considerable amount of work, not, not even two years ago, on this issue, to bring it up. At that time, one of the biggest issues with the majority was, and you were not one of the majorities, I know you did want to eliminate it, was that we didn't want to lose that income. It is busy work, but that busy work should be streamlined by now. Four months ago, we directed staff to take credit cards. I think the program that they have put into place is not streamlined, it's not online. Someone has to come in here, they've got to swipe a card. Business licenses should be paid online, put your number in, nobody has to walk in here, every other city does it. So it can be a streamlined process. Quite frankly, I think that staff didn't do the best job in that, so there's a lot of improvement that could be done on that. But to lose $50,000, $58,000 in income, when we, our expenses are only going up, is just not prudent for us. Once we take that away, we can't retrieve it. And I know that there are cities that don't have business licenses, Irvine is one of them, but Irvine has a whole lot of other fees that we don't have. And I know, I think it's Lake Forest, Laguna Hills doesn't have it either. They also have a whole lot of other fees that we don't have. So $58,000, almost 2% of our, of our budget, I don't think it's an issue. We don't have the staff to enforce business license, I don't know if we've ever done it in the past, but if someone does call and say you're running a business out of your home, you know, you're going to be sent a notice. Are we going to go after you? No, but we don't go after anybody, even if you have a brown lawn.
Well...
I'm not in favor of losing $58,000. I think we have some sort of control of knowing what's going on in that house, if there's a business running out of the house. Is it foolproof? Absolutely not. But, bad people do, bad people pay business licenses to, how's that? And sometimes you'll catch people doing things in their home, and it might be a gateway to finding out what is going on in that home. Maybe that's a sober living home? I don't have any idea. But to have something that's been established in the city and remove it is just not something I feel that we should do. And I think staff's done a considerable amount of work over the last two years, so, that's my, that's my...
Any comments from council?
Well, I didn't see any really rationale for why you want to drop the business license fee. It does generate money for us, but what's the rationale for dropping it?
The big rationale is that there's a lot of services that come into town, and if we were to enforce this to the letter, everybody coming into town would, would be forced to have a business license, even though them, themselves may be generating only a few hundred dollars a year in this, in the county, in our city. And this would include, you know, folks that come in to do minor repair work, to, to clean out your sewer lines, things like that, any type of rodent infestation removal, things like that, anything. So, if we were to really do this right, we would have an enforcement person, period. And we only have that done part-time. We have a lot of other studies that we, we've wanted to look at, and this takes away from the staff time. Now, I thought it was, it would be more prudent, since Anaheim and Irvine both do not have this, why don't we get rid of this, this busy work, as, as, I think it is a busy work, myself? And so that's why I brought it up, because it's something that I don't want to penalize all the small businesses that are, are in, in the city. Now, if you're running a store out of your house, basically, that's another story, or anybody here in this town center, but a lot of the small businesses here in town, and basically, they're, they're people that just call from the homes. And, I don't know, I mean, if, if that's what the council desires, it's fine. That's why I brought it to, to the attention here. I just didn't think it was right to have every little business that would come into town, to all the homes that we have here, to pay a hundred dollars.
And I agree with you. At the time, in February 2014, there was a company that the council was considering hiring...
Right.
...to search those out, but the council and its majority said, "No, that's not, we don't want that."
Right.
We didn't want that, and we voted against that, and we voted to just leave the business license as it was. So I agree with you there, I'm just, but $58,000 is, we're just not going to be able to find $58,000 elsewhere, and we do know our expenses are going to go up. And it can be streamlined. I agree, it's busy work. Needs to be streamlined, that's something that needs to be taken care of, and should just be put on the to-do list.
Yeah, with regards to streamlining, it, it becomes a bit of an issue for us. One, the minute you put, take credit cards over the internet, you're looking at different security protocols for accepting credit cards. And two, our business license database system is run by Microsoft Access. It's a pretty old system. I've looked into new software, but it's about 25% of the revenue that we collect, and at the end of the day, it just doesn't pencil out to me.
I think that, well, I think that it's something that, in the future, it, it can be streamlined. There are a lot of programs out there, and taking, we can take credit cards over the internet, I mean, we, it's just a project that needs to be streamlined, but...
That was the idea of getting rid of, of a lot of the business license, period, that there's just not a lot of busy work. I mean, obviously, the people that have a, as a revenue source, I mean, I hate to talk about it in that respect, for this, for this particular city, but, I mean, we have a town center here, there's, there's only two or three players here that are significant generators, and we encourage people to have home businesses, however they want to do it, and so they can improve their properties, do the permitting, to do all of the improvements for their houses. And I think that is, is more of a, with the permitting processes, where we should look at, and we're, we're so reasonable now, I think it's something that we should take a look at. But the reason I brought this up is for the, for the, for the strict effort of trying to streamline the whole thing. And that's why I put it on the calendar, because I think there's a lot of businesses that are shy to do business here, because they may receive a letter. And, so that's, and I think that to deny our residents the opportunity to have those services come in, strictly speaking, that, that's not a good thing to do. And I, also, the other part is the busy work, that we've got a very thrifty council, and a thrifty city, the way we run it, and I just don't think it's really a, a big, a big generator, overall. There was other places we, we could have some more efficiency. But, I, you know, we don't, we can table this, we can move it along, or we can just forget about it.
I move to keep the business license program as is, with no change.
I'd like to be heard briefly, I don't know if we're going to do motions. You know...
Well, I made it, I made one.
Yeah, I, I mean, initially, I have to agree with Deanna on it. A year or two ago, I might not have, because of the financial situation, but at this point, you know, the city's starting to get tighter and tighter on finances, and, you know, we're scrapping to keep our budget together, to keep the roads and, and things going, so I'm not sure it makes sense to, to cut it at this point. I agree with Deanna's comment on efficiency. For these dollars, it's silly, it should be done online, however, I heard Jared's comments, which kind of threw a little ice on that for the moment. So I think perhaps, as a way to balance it, because I also agree, Greg, with your comment that, you know, some gardener comes in here once a month, shouldn't have to feel like a criminal, because he hasn't come in and gotten a, a business license, so he can mow a guy's lawn once a month. So maybe the way to balance this out is, in that first category, on the service businesses there, the ones that come in and provide services, $0 to $15,000 is $25, it's nominal. Perhaps we should put, you know, and, and frankly, we don't really enforce it, so it's not like it's, it's a big crimp on business, it's just that technically, you're right. It, you know, they're, they're illegally doing business. But I think maybe if we put like a $5,000 annual number, or $2,500 annual number, whatever, instead of $0 to $15,000, so that the sporadic hit-and-miss gardener, or some guy plumber, gets a call to come to Villa Park to fix somebody's drain, and realizes he's got to go to City Hall and get a license to fix the one drain, you know, it exempts, I mean, he doesn't have to become a criminal, it probably won't do much of anything to our revenue. We just put a low number there, and then we accomplish a lot of your result without really affecting the big picture.
Yeah, I, I agree. I mean, that's, that's why I brought it up, so we can, but it just, the, the title says eliminate, it doesn't mean eliminate all business licenses. But also, Mrs. Moran's comments, I, I agree with her, that there are things we need to look at, and if there are, Todd, are there differences in the recovery house versus the, the ADA houses? I mean, obviously, there's, there's some, some fine, detailed differentials there.
Sure. Well, a couple of points. I guess first, to the philosophical discussion of business license taxes. I mean, the argument is, right, if you reduce taxation, you'll get more of the business activity, smaller government, less taxation benefit there. There are non-economic reasons people have business license programs. It's, it's a forced registration requirement, so you, as a city, know what businesses are in your city. And I've heard law enforcement at times say, sometimes that's useful, so you have contact people, and stuff of that nature. From a legal enforcement aspect, sometimes if there's a business that is acting improperly, one of the things I can throw them in prison for is not having a business license. Now, that may seem trivial, but it's, you know, every arrow in the quiver helps. So there are benefits other than the economic. Now, as to the, the questions about sober living facilities and differentiation under the business license tax and under state law, there are between, I forget the number, 12 or 18 different categorizations of types of such facilities, sober living being one, detox being one, community care, adult daycare, all these different types, and they all have different regulatory schemes. The issuance or non-issuance of a business license tax does not cure or help the city, really, in the zoning and the use of such buildings in residential areas, which is a state law issue, primarily if they have six or less, they're allowed, it's a matter of right. Or, under the ADA, because Newport Beach spent a million and a half dollars losing a case, so now there's a Ninth Circuit case that says that's an ADA right, Americans with Disabilities Act, that cities have to allow such facilities. So, I do not see, I mean, there's a small connection between, between the tax and the sober living facilities, but it is, one is not determinative of the other, and the issues we've been having in the city with, with such uses. So that's the overall, overall analysis on both those issues.
Okay, well, that's why I brought it up, because there's, I mean, obviously, we can adjust this schedule we have, and that wouldn't be so bad, but I just didn't think that it was, for some of these folks, it, it just, it just, I don't want to preclude any, any of our citizens to not have whoever they wanted to come in to, to tend to their, their property, for whatever reason they wanted. And that's the reason I brought it up.
And that's, that's a policy decision of, of City Hall.
Yeah, that's why I brought it up.
I mean, I will admit, I mean, I turned to Jared, and I was like, "Did I pay my business license tax?" Because I'm subject to it, as an attorney, practicing a profession, coming here, giving you that. I paid, right? Did I pay? Okay, good. Don't have to throw myself in prison.
Well, if you got Michelle's approval, you're like, "That's, that's good."
So, I mean, but that's a policy decision. Now, if you were to want to increase rates for financial reasons, that brings in California constitutional issues, and vote of the people, and stuff of that nature, so if you go down, that's always okay, but if you wanted to go up, that's a different set of issues.
Okay.
This mandates that everybody that comes into this city and does any work has a business license, $0 to $15,000. So, council call, do you want to leave it that way, for registration, for whatever purpose, so everybody's supposed to check in, which they won't anyway, but, or do we want to put some minimal dollar limit, so that people that are sporadic, nominal users don't even have an obligation to do it? To me, that's the question.
I'm going to remind everyone, I mean, I'm looking, I'm looking, we did the work already. I mean, just pull up the minutes from February 2014. We had three options of, I mean, staff's done this work two years ago. So to order them to do it again, when the majority of this, majority of us said no, and I appreciate, I appreciate Mayor Mills bringing it up again, but there's no reason to do the work again, we can just regurgitate the work we did last time. And at that time, by trying to eliminate, like, say, the gardeners or the maids or what have you, at that time, we were going to lose about $30,000 a year, so from 50, we were going to lose 30. Well, now, if we're only making 20, that is going to be burdensome, whether it's streamlined or not. We're assuming that those gardeners and all the plumbers, and all the maids, and everyone who's coming into the city is paying a business license. Well, I'm going to make a really simple assumption, they're not.
Of course they're not.
They're not. So I don't believe that our business, I know what it says, but we don't enforce it, just let it go. Some people need to have business license for other reasons that don't have anything to do with us, for their insurance, they have to have a business license to do things, and it's not an issue, and no one complains. I mean, it's not an issue. It hasn't been, and it wasn't two years ago, so...
I want to make the motion. I'll second it.
I made, I made the motion not to change it.
I'll, I'll second the motion to Sheldon.
That, that was my motion, yeah. But I appreciate, I appreciate thinking that we could reduce this fee, but we don't have a lot to reduce.
Then I have a, I had, I want to make a comment before we move on here, is that...
You, you seconded the motion?
Yeah, I just seconded your motion.
Okay.
Hey, Jared?
No, you can make comments.
The reason that I'm making a comment is because I, I just hate to have all these types of activities going on when we don't enforce it. I mean, we can enforce it, we don't have the staff to enforce it. So that's, to me, why, why have it there? Are we going to have a selective enforcement?
Oh, I, I agree, that's, that's a great comment, but when we have a council who doesn't enforce banking regulations on the foundation, to enforce business licenses, to me, is silly. It, I mean, when we don't enforce bylaws, what, but we're going to go to the business license? So, I mean, that, we can, we can say that about anything.
Okay. I suspect...
Then I, you know, I agree, but you can't do that.
Probably thousands of laws in this state aren't enforced. You know, they're enforced if there's a problem, they're there, if a problem comes up, we've enacted it, we live with it, we do the best we can with it, and I think we, I think we move on.
I don't want to enforce code enforcement either, you know?
Yeah, I mean, we, we are a reactive city, not a proactive. We do that in all kinds of areas, trash cans, you know?
Yeah.
So I, I think the reality is that we've set up our policy, probably doesn't make a lot of sense to change it at this point, you know, and realistically, we just move on. If a problem comes up, we address it.
Okay. Any comments from council?
Yeah, I'd like to call for the question.
Okay. I've already seconded.
I have a first and a second.
I already seconded a motion to Sheldon.
So, I'm sorry there, yes.
Motion on the floor is to keep the business license program as is. Councilman Fessenelli?
Yes.
Councilman Barnett?
Yes.
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Mills?
No.
The motion carries, 4 to 1.
Okay. Let's move on. Next, we'll discuss Councilor Barnett's request to reconsider the council chamber remodel project. Councilman, do you have a report?
Yeah, I do. You know, a few meetings back, I believe we passed a resolution to budget $50,000 for remodeling of the council chamber, and since then, we've had to revisit pavement expenses and, and public infrastructure, and although it would be nice to do something here, I'm not sure exactly what, what the plan was, I think $50,000 could be much more well-spent I think $50,000 could be much more well-spent in pavement and sewers and infrastructure. You know, if there's something we specifically need here, you know, want to put a budget on it, I suppose, you know, that's something we could discuss. But, you know, we've got carpet and chair issues. That should be covered in large part, I understand it probably is, by the user fees for the room. We have most of our audiovisual stuff. We've got as much TV as I'm interested in having on me. So if there's some particular concern, I'm happy to sit here and address it with everybody, but I think we should kill that and reallocate that money to infrastructure because we're getting a little tight on dollars after that last pavement survey. So that's all I had to say.
Any other comments?
A year ago, we got a... Look, I think we all got an email from Robert Taylor, I think it is, on Lee Street, asking if he's living in Detroit because the pavement on the street is so bad. And actually, when we did the pavement survey, it came out at 50 percent. I'd like to defer redecorating the City Hall until we get that street paved. It is a... And $50,000 might take care of that little street, but it looks terrible. Beautiful neighborhood with a terrible street.
Any comments?
Again, this is an item that has been discussed. I mean, it's silly, quite frankly, that it's coming up. You know, we're not putting in new windows. We're just maintaining the building. We let the bathrooms go so long that we ended up having to spend... How much did we spend on the bathrooms? 30 grand or whatever it was? I mean, what we're looking at here is, you know, we don't have electricity. The carpet and the chairs is not covered by the user fees of...
Or from it.
That we do collect. They're not... I mean, our user fees are so low, it's not. And this room is used by a lot. We're looking at painting it. We're looking at putting the tables and the chairs in a cabinet. So when you have a council meeting, the walls aren't full of tables and chairs, which should have been done long ago, and quite frankly, should never even come to council. That's just building cabinets. But it got to the point where now we're looking at more than 20,000. We gave them a budget of up to 50. We've discussed it in three or four budget meetings. We've gone through it. We're not looking at shite carpet. I think it's called maintaining your home. This room is used by everybody. I mean, it is. It is. And it needs to be cleaned. It needs to be painted. You know, we've got the same... We've got the same stuff on the wall. That's all it is. I don't know. I understand. We're not poor. I'm getting the impression, for some reason, we're giving the residents a wrong idea of where the city sits financially. And we sit financially very... In a very good position because we're very conservative. So... And we're taking care of all of our infrastructure. You can always take care of it all. You can always remodel the entire city all at once. We're not going to do that. So we have a great five- and seven-year project. $50,000 over the course... We haven't... These chairs are how old, Jared?
Probably nearing 10 years old.
Okay, about 10 years old.
With Candoma purchased them, and he left in 2008.
Right. So, I mean, we're looking at... It's called maintenance, okay? We can't let things fall apart. If you walk back to that cabinet over there, it's falling apart. I mean, what are we going to do?
Yeah, that's another issue, is that any type of locks on those cabinets back there, they're all in disrepair, and they weren't properly done at the time. And just like the bathrooms are not complete from the contractor, and he's not coming back, I guess. So not much we can really do about that unfortunately right now. But I think that this room needs to be improved. We've been asking for it for three years, that I can recall.
Three years we've brought this up.
Yeah, because it was new for about a year, year and a half. Then, of course, it gets the usage. And I think it... We also looked at some other types of audiovisuals so that, you know, the council can actually see what's going on, not at the screen. And, of course, it was okay when I set out the ends, but now it's much more acute. I can't see what's going on. But, you know, do we have to have it? No, we don't have to have it. We can do without, obviously. We can be ultra-conservative and just do without, period. But I think that we would... This is an impression that people get when they come to Villa Park, when they come to our city council chambers. And I think it's something we'd like to have, the type of materials and construction that can take, that the kind of use that it gets. This is a community room, for lack of a better term. That's what it is. And I'd like to keep it that way. I am sensitive to Bob's comments about the street. Jared, that particular street in front of Mr. Robert Taylor's house, what is the problem there? I mean, isn't it scheduled to be redone soon?
You know, I don't have the schedule in front... Or off memory. We'll take a look at it with our payment management program, which is just updated.
Right.
Next summer's going to be TAF. The summer after that is likely when it will be repaved.
I think there's a lot of cracking in that particular street. That does happen. It's more of an isolated sort of thing. And I know there are other spots that have it, obviously. And we're going to have that. But overall, our city does very well in the, what, 73 percent, 74 percent range?
We're 83 percent.
83 percent. So we're at the very, very top-top of the entire county, if not the state, in the condition of our streets. And, of course, we're going to have the other report coming out of the sewers and see how good that is. And then, we're going to have to look at that very much long-term as well because the sewers are what, some of them are 60, 70 years old, some parts of it.
The sewer report was just updated in 2013. What we have going on right now is the storm drain master plan update. So we should be receiving that probably in the next month or two. It's a little bit... It was scheduled to be completed this month. It was a little bit delayed because they had struggled trying to find some information, which we just didn't have on-site. So they went out there, remapped the entire network, put it in G.I.S. base layer, and tomorrow, I'm actually meeting with them to pull some street files, so.
So we'll have a report next month?
At the contract discretion. It was supposed to be done this month, but got a little delayed.
Put a little heat on him, what, her or whatever, so. Okay, that was...
I'd like to clarify a little bit. Deanna concerned me that I may be making people feel like we're, you know, we're dying in financial trouble up here. Villa Park is in good financial shape. We're really conservative. We watch the money. We have a spectacular budget reserve, better than almost any cities out there, as I understand it from a percentage perspective. So she's correct when she says that. What stirs my concern is that we recently did a pavement survey, and we've been spending, oh, I think around $300,000, that pretty close, Jared? Around $300,000 a year on pavement in the city to keep the roads maintained. And we got a survey came back, said we should increase that to $1 million a year. That's not real feasible for us. So we've budgeted about $700,000 a year to get toward that goal. And the streets are in good shape, and we'd like to keep them that way. So that did put a little financial strain. I'm not going to say it puts us under, but it certainly crimped our budget a little bit compared to what we were used to. And frankly, I don't know what it is we're going to do here, but I don't really see a need for $50,000 in here. So I guess my suggestion is going to be, unless somebody else has a comment, maybe I'll just make this as a motion. I'd like to continue this and have someone come to us with a proposed budget for this room to see what we're going to do and what it costs because now I'm hearing a $20,000 number. So I agree. I mean, it is...
Where'd the $20 come from?
I thought you said something about $20,000.
Not at all.
No, that was when we talked about the business license.
Yeah, it was different.
Okay. In any event, I don't know where $50,000 goes in here. So my... I would like to move that we continue this and get a proposal. Let's see what we're proposing to deal with this room and what it's going to cost because I just don't see putting $50,000 into this when we have infrastructure that we could be pouring money into. And perhaps we should up the user fees a little bit if it's not handling maintenance of the room. But again, I'd like to see the budget numbers before we just dump $50,000 in here when we're getting rather frugal on our pavement management. We cut it from $1 million to $700,000.
But we did that during the budget process.
This is already done. And besides that, we don't have to have $50,000. It could be much less than that.
We gave them up to that.
I think that's what he's saying. My understanding of this number, $50,000, is a made-up number. There's nothing behind it, as I understand.
It was an estimate, yeah.
Well, no, it's just a made-up number. I would rather like to see them come back with the actual number, what you want to do, and what does it really cost, and then see if you can afford it.
That was my...
We already have this in our budget.
Because it may be less, or you may get a high number, and you may want to cut it down and not do everything. But this number doesn't tell me anything about what we're going to do here. I would like to have some electricity up here.
Yeah, that would be nice.
That was one thing. Maybe that's what we do. But I agree with you. We need to come up with a budget and a plan for what we're going to do and take a look at that because this $50,000 was just a made-up number.
But we did that in our budget meetings.
We did that already in the budget meeting. We talked about it.
How many budget meetings? We had three or four budget meetings.
We made up this number.
No, we did not make up this number. And in fact, the Women's League has already contributed towards this and given us money for new chairs. This is not something new. This is three years old.
No, no.
And we've talked about it every year. It needs to be painted. We need to put the chairs away.
I'm agreeing with you. But I'm just saying, the number of $50,000 doesn't have anything behind it.
Well, it gets even worse. Jared, can you comment on this? I mean, we've tried to have some people come in and bid on this, and could you comment on that, please?
You know, the problem with this project is we've never truly had a detailed scope of work. It's always just been, "Yeah, let's put some money into this."
Let's upgrade it. We didn't say what we want to do.
That's my recollection as well.
You've got to say, "What do you want to do," and then finally, what it costs.
Yeah.
And then see if you want to do it.
We've talked about new chairs. We've talked about moving the projector screen to elsewhere in the room, but the problem is, we have no place to move the projector screen to. I mean, we can't put it in the center of the room because then it blocks the audience from council. We don't have really enough room on the side of the walls over here. We can relocate one of the televisions to the side so you can see it. But it's always just been kind of a wish list of items, and we haven't nailed down that scope of work. So the $50,000 was just thrown out in the budgetary process.
Yep.
But we did nail down the work. We nailed down...
We had items, too.
Where we wanted the cabinet, the cabinets to put in the tables. I mean, we've discussed this so much. It's called maintenance. We have not maintained our own council chambers.
We've discussed it, but we do not have a true scope of work.
Well, that's not the direction that Councilman Mills and I have been giving you since we got on this council. And that started in the Community Development Council when we first got on. So it's longer than three years. We're almost working on four years now. But on... Let's back it up just a second. We talk about our local schools, and that they haven't been maintained. We haven't maintained this, our own building here. When we have ceilings tiles, you know, that... I guess we had a leak that don't get replaced. That does not look very good. All right, we have people who come in here who pay money to rent our chambers. And we have some cords over there. Nothing is smart. We can't hook up some of our computers to be able to use the PowerPoint presentation. And we've talked about this, I don't know how many more times. If we're going to talk about it again, quite frankly, I think it's going to be a waste of resources to put staff on it again. I don't know why we need to have a presentation on what chairs to buy. The chairs are 10 years old. Go buy chairs.
The chairs, you were working with the foundation to get me the chairs you wanted so I can order them, but I don't have direction on that yet.
And we also gave you... We gave you direction on what the cabinets look like. We tried to tell you where to go. Have somebody build them to put the tables away.
The problem with that is it's above the threshold. So we have to go out to informal bids for that. But to do that, you need a scope of work. And what we do not have is the scope of work, so I can meet with various contractors one-on-one and ask them. When I've met with contractors in the past, here are the ideas, what we're looking at. They've always wanted to know, "What chairs are we getting in so they can build the cabinets around the chair size? What tables are we going to get so they can build the tables around the chair size?" And that's what we need to figure out first.
Well, I thought we were going to use the tables we already have.
And that's why we need a scope of work for the project.
But that's the issue. You never get...
You know what? This is... You're right. This is going nowhere.
I think what Barnett's motion...
I merely request, I'm merely suggesting, and I'm moving, that we continue this item and ask to be presented with a proposal that we can then consider from a cost perspective because I don't like this blind allocation of $50,000 where we need money for roads, et cetera. That's just...
I'm tired of hearing about money for roads. We've got this budget we're going to have for the next two or three years.
I understand. It's a pretty heavy hit on the budget.
I'll second his motion.
Call the question.
One thing I might add, could we maybe form a council chamber remodel ad hoc committee of Mayor Mills and Councilman Fasenelli? We'll meet, we'll design a scope, we'll come back with the project.
This is... It's okay. We can do that. But this is something we've really gone over before, and we pointed out that we're going to use the tables we already have. And the tables was the big thing, not the chairs, actually, by, you know. And that would be... And we gave you pictures of different things because you also needed to have a sort of a budget in a number that you had to talk to the contractors because they want to know, you know, how much is it going to be? But if we would like to vote on it now, we can continue it next month. We can certainly do that.
Let's just get the proposal and see what it is and how much it costs, and then we can address it. I mean, that's the...
Well, you won't be here, so it won't be an issue that you need to deal with.
Well, neither will I.
I may or may not be here, but...
No, you won't be. I mean, it's just... It's October.
Depends on how quickly you do it.
Okay, so...
The motion is to continue the project, and we'll come back at a later date with the formalized scope of work?
Well, what are we continuing if there's no project on the books? There's a $50,000 budget allocation, so there is no project.
To continue this matter, and we'll return to council with the formalized scope of work. Is a motion on the floor, if that's okay with the maker and the second?
I'm essentially reconsidering the $50,000 item and suggesting, instead of a $50,000 budget item, that staff come back to us with their proposal. We review the proposal and vote on it.
And form an ad hoc committee, as I heard, too.
I mean, you probably need to do it anyway because this work's got to get done, and it doesn't look like anything's going on.
That's been about three years now, yeah.
Right. Maybe this will force it to get done. Now, we'll have a proposal, and we'll know what's going to happen.
Well, we see this is where we've got a lot of time spent on other things that came up all of a sudden. We had a lot of ad hoc actions over the last couple of years that I know of. It's a lot of staff time spent on going through records and copying things, so as an example.
I think I'd like to make a substitute motion. Given the fact that we have a city manager who is going to be leaving us, and we have two councilmen, one of them who's proposing this idea, I think that this matter should just not continue. And if the new council wants to come in and clean up the place, they can bring that up. But given the fact that you're not going to be on the council, you voted for the budget, but now you don't want it anymore, and...
Because our circumstances have changed, Anna. Our budget, we've got a $300,000 or $400,000 annual increase just in pavement costs. That's what triggered it. Our overhead is going up to maintain our infrastructure. If that hadn't happened, I wouldn't have raised this. That's what concerned me.
Well, also the...
But then why don't we raise the fees? Why don't you look... Why don't the...
Because I'd rather not have this than raise the fees.
We don't... But this is our city. This is where people come.
I know, but, you know...
You don't want to maintain this room. We're going to be looking at... I mean, you want to complain about schools? Look at that. Come on, we have to clean the place.
We don't need a council meeting to replace those, okay?
Yeah, Mike can do that.
You're talking about remodeling. I don't even know what you're talking about remodeling or the cost.
Well, where were you during those four budget meetings?
You still don't know? Jared just told us we don't know what we're doing, and I don't know.
Okay, well, let's settle down.
I don't know.
Anyway. Okay, let's just call the question. Is there a second on... You had a substitute motion?
My substitute motion is to remove it from the budget and remove the project because it's silly to have a council, two councilmen who are leaving. We cannot have an ad hoc committee and come back to this council with the city manager also leaving in the next 45 days, too.
Okay, I second.
That's all.
Discussion?
That's fine.
Okay. Any other discussion from council?
So the direction on the floor is to eliminate and remove the project from the budget. What we'll have to do is come back at the next meeting with a budget adjustment to reallocate the money.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to make a comment?
Well, I'd like to make a comment.
Oh, sorry.
Are you saying, just remove the project entirely?
Yeah.
That's actually the item.
That's the item. That's what was brought to us.
I saw that he had changed his mind to come just to do a scope of work and tell us what it costs.
So...
I... I mean, the only thing that's changed with me is because of the increased budget demands, I thought we should review the item and see what the actual cost is. I thought $50,000 was a lot. I don't even know what we're going to do.
I thought that was reasonable.
Anyway.
And that doesn't really change the budget.
Nope, it does not. You're right. But any other comment, Bob?
But we need it for the streets.
All right, let's just call the question. I see no... Anyone from the public like to comment? Seeing none?
So the substitute motion takes precedent, and that is to eliminate the project from the budget. Councilman Fasenelli?
Yes.
Mayor Mills?
No.
Councilman Barnett?
Yes.
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
No.
The motion carries three to two.
Become quite the diverse council.
There we go. Okay, next item is item 10.
No more hobbles.
Now, we'd like to have individual council information items, starting with Councilmember Colacott.
Yes, I attended the League of Cities meeting in Long Beach last month. There was one item that was... I was given direction on that dealt with a traffic safety position paper that was developed by the League of Cities. The direction that I was given was to oppose it. And when this item came up before the general group, surprisingly, a number of cities voiced the same concerns that we had, that it might provide incentive for the legislature to mandate, uh, one-size-fits-all traffic regulations on cities. However, the, uh, the motion, uh, the proposal that the League of Cities came up with did pass, although there were a number of cities that opposed it. Probably two-thirds to one-third.
Councilman Fasenelli?
Uh, I attended the, um, Orange Mayor's Prayer Breakfast, and Mayor Mills was actually there also. And that was very nice to, to see the mayor being recognized over an orange. And also, um, one of the other items, I, we went to the Hall of Heroes Gala. This was the first gala for the Orange County Hall of Heroes. At the fairgrounds, they are building, um, a new building. Um, I believe it's being opened on November eleventh, and it is...
November eleventh, yeah.
Yeah, November, and it is there to have memorabilia from Orange County veterans and to honor Orange County veterans. So next time you go to the fair, you're gonna see this beautiful building with a lot of history in it, and it'll be nice. And, um, in fact, uh, Councilman Barnett was with us, and, uh, and Mayor Mills was there also. And it was a very nice, very nice event for their, for their first time. And it opens up November eleventh.
Did we hear how much money they raised by the ch, by chance?
I don't know. No, I haven't...
You know, on, on that issue, um, and I don't usually comment on these, but the, there's some real significance to that, to that project down there. The, the concept is to let the current youth see as best they can firsthand the cost of freedom. Uh, you know, that was explained to me in some detail passionately, that it's an attempt to let the younger generation understand, maybe not even just the younger generation, but let a portion of America that isn't perhaps aware of it recognize the true cost of what we have here on a personal level, that freedom is not free. And, uh, and, I mean, I, I just think that's a really significant item. I hope they're successful.
Yeah, I hope so also. It's, it's gonna be nice. That's it?
Rick?
Yeah, you know what? First of all, I'll apologize. You know, I, I throw my two cents in about fire at the beginning, 'cause fires are geniuses, and I really, I guess I should wait till, till the end. It's really a, it's really a council member item attending the meeting. So since I, since I already, you know, berated the system at the beginning of the meeting, let, let me throw some, some good bits out here. Um, I'm constantly after fire, and, and I'm after fire because I'm on the Fire Authority Board. There are other agencies out here, such as Caltrans, that, you know, it's the same inefficient government waste situation. Uh, we spend more on roads than any other state per mile, and we got the worst roads. Inefficient. It's just horrible. But that said, I just wanna let everybody know, you know, I've been there for almost five years on fire. Our former mayor spent, I think, was it, Brad, twenty-eight years? I think he spent twenty-eight years, as I recall, on O C F A. He was a volunteer fire captain, and he loved O C F A. Loved the people. And when I got on the board, he came to me, I'm a bankruptcy attorney by trade, and he said, "Rick, you need to go to O C F A. They need a bankruptcy attorney, not me. It's a financial mess." And so I went on hoping I could do something, and haven't accomplished as much as I would like. The, the people of the agency are great. It's a very nice group. They're effective. And if you need them, I tell you, they'll be there really quick, and they'll take care of you. They care. It's, it's a very, it's a very good group. And the Board of Directors is a good group of people. They're a caring, uh, group. And, and it's a, it's a pleasant place to be. And if anything happens to me, I totally expect fire. I'll be right on top of it, and they'll take care of me. It's a great group. That said, it's a financial disaster, and it's sucking the public dry. And it's unsustainable, and it's just, you know, I beat my head against the wall down there for almost five years. So that, if you listen through the first part of it, that's what you heard. It has to change. It's not just fire. Uh, the government is spending vastly more than they have, and they're basically bankrupt in the public. Cities have gone bankrupt. They don't fix the problem. All they do is charge off all the debt, the money they borrowed from the private sector and funds, and they leave these problems in place. And they'll be filing bankruptcies again. So, you know, it's just very frustrating, but I just wanna let it know. It's, it's a good agency, and there's great people there. They will take care of you, and it's, you know, it's wonderful. But the cost is out of control. You can't justify the cost. It's just outrageous. Uh, if I told you the numbers, I mean, you guys would fall out of your chairs. It's just, it's just out of control.
That's it, thanks. Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
No.
Nothing?
Uh, I, too, went to the Hall of Heroes Gala on Saturday night. Very nice event. And, uh, also, uh, the cost of freedom is, uh, as far as a counselor, of course, you are a veteran. Bill is the only one in our council that is a veteran, and the Air Force, so, uh, I wanted to thank you for that. But also, the, uh, other thing that we went to was the prayer breakfast. And I was, uh, very, very moved by the whole event. I've been to it a couple of the times, but this time was a little more special. They actually had a group from Orange, a group of three brothers and a sister, that entertained us. And it was quite amazing that these are all self-taught musicians, and they're homeschooled as well. And it was just, uh, it was very nice to see four, uh, young folks, just like you all in the audience here, uh, get up and entertain a bunch of adults, and they did a really, really good job. But also, I really liked, uh, Mayor Smith's comment. She did a really nice job and had, had a very nice event. And it went off just, just as on, on time as usual, usual with her. So that was my report. And is there any other comments from council before we close?
I just wanna remind everyone to come out to our Halloween Fest, um, have a good time on Sunday. There'll be food here. And, um, trick-or-treating. If you have youngsters who wanna come in here, they'll bring their bags. They'll have a Halloween costume for them. There will also be a dog costume contest also, which is always fun to see. So we certainly welcome you to, to come out and enjoy the festivities with us.
You know, I'd like to make a brief comment just to the students.
Go ahead.
You know, you, you guys, this is like a little kinda piddly political body here. But, you know, it's the same thing here as it is almost every level through Congress. Um, our, our counsel, our city attorney is, he works with a fairly good-sized firm in Costa Mesa. He contracts, he's the city attorney for Irvine and various other cities. He's also told me that our little tiny, uh, dinky, tiny city here has the same issues, same problems, as the bigger cities, just bigger dollar amounts. So...
I don't use the word dinky.
I did. I did that. It's a dinky little city. I mean, this is probably smaller than...
I would never call Villa Park.
Yeah, I did that. Our counsel did, and I did that. This, this, this city's probably smaller than some housing developments, I would suspect. Um, but what I wanted to point out was, you know, and this wasn't the worst session, but you see a certain amount of tension and bickering here and, and argument on these issues. But you know what? We all get along really, really well. And, you know, I socialize with, with, with some of the council members outside of here. And, you know, we come up here, and I think what you want council members to do is you want them to use their own judgment and do the best thing they can and make their vote and do what they think is right. And we get into arguments over this stuff. But, you know, everybody maintains their relationships, and everybody respects the system we've got, as inefficient as it may be sometimes. Everybody respects it, and we walk out of here, no ma, if I lose on something that I'm passionate about, and I did a few meetings ago. I really wanted a sign out here with, with a, with a display board on it, so we can push them up.
An electronic sign.
An electronic sign. I want it out here in the worst way. I worked on it for years. I'm gonna be off the council in a month or so. And, and our mayor kind of sunk it for me, and, and I was a little frustrated. But you know what? He, he did what he thought made sense, and I totally respect that. And when I walk out of here, no matter what decisions are made, whether on my way or another way, I totally honor it, and I'm good with whatever happens, because everybody here has been elected, and I'm convinced that they're all doing what they think is appropriate. And so that's really cool. And that's what's really neat about this system in this country. So, you know, just think about that. And if any of you serve or do anything, you know, you can get up here and fight it out all you want and be as passionate as you want. But when we walk out of here, everybody's arm-in-arm. We took our best shot. So unless somebody's being paid off, and I know they're not on this, on this, uh, council, um, you know, that's where we are, and it's, and that's the great thing about our system, as inefficient as it may be. So I just want you all to, you got to witness firsthand the bickering and the battles. But this will all work out in the end, and, and we all respect it and, and honor what comes out, so.
And make sure you vote, 'cause it matters. You gotta vote, so you get by people on here. Voting's important. Vote on the eighth.
And I think everybody, I think all the council would agree with those comments. Am I, am I wrong? Anybody?
We're, we're good.
Yeah, so...
Any other comments? I believe, uh, our city council has a...
Yeah, just one thing. If, Mayor, if you could adjourn tonight's meeting to...
November...
November fifteenth at six-thirty, because that's not our regular meeting. We have to make that an adjourned, regular meeting, 'cause we have some ordinances at the next meeting.
November...
It's November fifteenth at six-thirty, so we just adjourn to then, technically, for Brown Act reasons, because it's not the usual for it's Tuesday.
Because we do that regularly, though, and our calendar's set up for November and December both.
No, I understood, but in the code, it's, right, so if you could just do it...
I understand, so long as we're covered here in a public setting, okay.
Right, now, and secondly, um, you will see, uh, because we don't know what's gonna happen on November eighth with Prop sixty-four, which is the recreational marijuana stuff. Currently in the city, medical marijuana is banned. The California Supreme Court said cities, even though it's allowed under state law, could ban medical marijuana. So the council previously has banned medical marijuana dispensaries within the city. Um, even though it's all banned under federal law, so the whole concept that the state can allow it makes no constitutional sense. But setting that aside, Prop sixty-four would expand that to recreational use. And, you know, in speaking with the city manager, it's my understanding of the direction of the council that the city would not, uh, be desirous of having recreational pot shops in the town center. So I'm gonna be coming back to you with an ordinance that also bans recreational use.
Okay.
Just depending, and I need to do that fairly quickly.
And we had to do that because we couldn't do it, 'cause it didn't matter when we, we set up some of the other, other, uh, laws we had.
Right. Well, our code, our code, we have a permissive zoning code. So unless a use is specifically allowed, it's prohibited.
Prohibited.
And we also have stuff that says, if something's a violation of law, it's, it's a nuisance and not allowed. Marijuana is still a Schedule One drug under federal law. It's, it's a crime, so it's not allowed. So we're being extra cautious by putting specifically something in the zone. That, so just so you know, that'll be coming back to you.
Coming back, okay.
If Prop sixty-four passes, which everybody tells me it will.
Just to elaborate that, and I, I understand the, we'll call it the pot shop, what have you, but can the pharmacy sell it?
You know, there are medicinal purposes of marijuana. It's called Marinol, which is a pharmaceutical allowed. So, I mean, a lot of the arguments for, for medical marijuana is, "Oh, it's the only way my people get the medicine, get drugs." That's a complete fabrication, right? Um, if people need that for specific ailments, they can get, can get it in synthetic pharmaceutical form. And pharmacies aren't affected. I have no regulatory control over that.
That's different, okay. But the pharmacy cannot open up its...
So, yeah, this is...
It's shopped with its little bottles everywhere and what have you. That's what it is.
And this issue came up in Irvine, where, you know, we have big hospitals, and sometimes, and they're, they're not impacted in actual legal use.
Should we poll the students on this, on this recreation...
No, I don't think so. That's okay.
I don't know if they wanna be polled.
We're not gonna do that.
I tried.
No, we're not gonna do that. Seeing none? Now, this, we are... Pardon me?
Troublemaker.
I know. Well, we're adjourned to six-thirty P M. on November fifteenth.